In that case, well, good morning then. I'll call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors on June 22, 2021, here in beautiful, nice morning today, Palm Desert. Yeah, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do the remarks before roll call. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's executive orders in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. Today's meeting is presented in hybrid format, both in person at CVWD's Steve Robbins Administration Building and via Zoom. The Governor's executive orders N25-20 and N29-20 suspend certain requirements of the Brown Act, and district board members and staff may choose to participate in person or by video conference. The public may view this board meeting online as there will be no public location for attending in person. This meeting is being streamed live. We're still not, I don't know. Streaming live on the district's website and YouTube channel. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda were given the opportunity to submit comments by emailing the clerk of the board or mailing comments to the district. Members of the public also have the opportunity to join the meeting via Zoom and provide oral comment during the meetings. And we can do that with a hand raise. Do we have any general public comments?
Good morning, Mr. President. We do. I believe, let me check, we do have several. I know a few are interested in speaking in regards to the hearing. Let me just ask if any of the members that are currently attending, do you have general public comment? If you do, if you could please raise your hand. Otherwise, I will assume that it is in regards to the public hearing. Okay, I do not. So I do have six individuals, and they likely will be speaking on the public hearing.
Okay, so we'll have opportunity for that.
At that time.
At that time. And then, given the fact that I have at least one board member attending remotely, we will be sure to call on all remote directors to make sure they have an opportunity to provide input, and we will be doing roll call votes. And roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada, I'm just going to make sure he's not joined us online. Nope, okay. I will note when he enters the room. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so with the quorum, we have, do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to today's agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Uh-uh. I know we've already done general public comments, so we'll move on to that. Oh my gosh, let me look. Consent calendar. I'm gonna look at my sire. I'm okay with that. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? I'll make a motion to approve. And we have a motion by Bianco II, by Director Aguilar. And roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed four, oh, with one absent. Hmm, this is nice. We're having some presentations. We haven't done this in a while. We've done it virtually, but not really. We have two anniversaries and one retirement. And so why don't, and who do we have present here?
We have Bill Blankenship, Chris Freeman, and Sandra Vialobos.
Oh, everyone's here. Okay, well, why don't I do the two anniversaries first, and then we'll do the retirement. So Bill Blankenship, accounts receivable technician, 35 years, and continuing. Bill started his career with CVWD in a service station. After six months, he transferred to customer billing where he has worked in either billing or in finance. Bill's responsible for the monthly billing of the district's rack customers and assisting with domestic billing and daily cash processing. Bill is an asset to the billing department, and we look forward to working with him for many more years. So thank you. We'll come up, right? Can we do that? We can come on up? And so we'll do the two anniversaries, come on up, and then we'll do the retirement. Chris Freeman, accounts tech, I'm sorry, accounts receivable technician, 30 years. Chris Freeman was hired at the district right into customer billing as a biller and currently holds the title of accounts receivable technician. Chris has seen a lot of changes that have taken place in the department and district-wide over the years, but still considers CVWD an excellent place to work. Chris is highly regarded in the department for her knowledge and experience, and we look forward to working with her many more years. So congratulations on your anniversaries. And I guess we'll come on up and present, do we have something to present?
Yes.
Oh, they're down there. All right.
I'll move that around. I can do it.
I can do it.
Let's do this. All right. Whatever you want. You're the queen for the day. You've got Chris.
Thank you, sir.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Three, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Did you guys want to say anything?
Yes.
I wanted to just thank everyone for the opportunity to work with such a fine organization under great leadership. I wanted to shout out to Scott, the director, managers, Yacina, and I mean, and also my coworkers. They're the best in the department and in the whole company. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. And then, so then we have a retirement. Thought I'd do it separately, so it's not, that's doing in the way there. So Sandra Vialobos retiring with 30 years in the Development Services Technician II. Sandra came, started her 30-year career at CVWD on June 10, 1991, as a Word Processing Operator I. In 1995, she promoted to Customer Service Water Clerk and worked there for approximately seven years before transferring to Development Services Aid in 2002. In February of 2005, Sandra promoted to Development Services Technician I in 2007. She was a key player in the implementation of our Sun Guard software. In 2014, she promoted to her current position as a Development Services Technician II. Tommy Folks, Sandra's supervisor, states that Sandra's excellent customer service and extensive knowledge will be missed by our customers and all departments within CVWD. Sandra's customer service is over the top. For the past 25 years, Sandra has been involved in organizing the yearly CVWD recognition dinners and has been an active board member of the district's Employee Social Association since it started in 2013. Sandra is one of the, one to credit for the success of the association's most popular event, the Kids' Christmas Party. Sandra will be enjoying her retirement with her husband Miguel, who retired from CVWD in 2017. Sandra plans to enjoy her family and grandson MJ at her new home in Beaumont. Sandra and Miguel have a bucket list of travel destinations that they plan to visit. We wish you the best in the future, and congratulations, Sandra, on your retirement. I'm trying to do it without fingerprints. This is for you.
Customer operator, one, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Now, your turn. Do you want to make any comments?
You don't have to. It's up to you.
No. After 30 years, I've got to work in several departments with different people, and like Bill says, our organization is excellent. I'm glad that I got the opportunity to work here and the people I work with in the different departments and even outside of the department. So I've worked with many good, excellent people. So I appreciate all the support and thank you because part of the support, you ended with friendships, not just, not just coworkers, you actually become friends, so I'll miss that part of it.
Well, the friendships don't have to.
There you go.
Sandra, I just want to tell you that, you know, since I got here at CVWD, you were open, you were open arms with me. You helped me introduce me to, to a lot of different people who work here, and I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
You're all welcome to stay or move on. Entirely up to you.
You don't need to stay if you don't want to. So we have a public hearing next. At this time, staff will provide a presentation on the 2020 Coachella Valley Regional Urban Water Management Plan, Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and Appendix L of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Following the presentation, we will open the public hearing to receive input from the public. So Zoe, take, take it away.
So, good morning, President Powell, members of the board, and also to the public who, those members that are participating for today's public hearing. So the Department of Water Resources requires that California water suppliers that provide over 3,000 acre feet of water per year or have more than 3,000 connections, that they prepare an urban water management plan every five years. The content of the plan is prescripted, and it includes a forecast of urban water demands and available supplies for the next 20 years, with an optional additional five years, an assessment of the supply reliability during drought, the programs that are in place to encourage water use efficiency, as well as the actions to reduce demands in times of constrained supply, otherwise known as the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. For the 2020 planning cycle, six agencies collaborated on the development of a regional Coachella Valley urban water management plan. For 2020, there were also some new requirements. This includes a five-year drought risk assessment, seismic risk assessment, the adoption of a water shortage contingency plan, coordination with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, also known as SIGMA, a climate change assessment, as well as demonstration of reduction in delta reliance.
That's sad.
So this next slide shows the service area and participating agencies in the Regional Urban Water Management Plan. They include Coachella Valley Water District, or CVWD, Desert Water Agency, Mission Springs Water District, Myoma Dunes Water Company, India Water Authority, and Coachella Water Authority. I do want to note that for this 2020 plan, CVWD has included its demand projections, the current and future projected demands, not just of its current service area, but also the areas within its boundary that are not currently served by CVWD, but may be consolidated in the future or connected. So what goes into creating an urban water management plan? So first of all, it's about capturing future demand projections and the existing water supply portfolio that is available to meet that demand. And the other element that goes into it is stakeholder input. The agencies that collaborated on the Regional Urban Water Management Plan hosted two public workshops. In this, during this cycle, we also used an online collaboration tool that was open for approximately a month to gather additional feedback. The public workshops were held remotely due to the limitations presented by the COVID So in the next 25 years, the Coachella Valley is expected to grow by approximately 50% in population, and this is based on projections from the Southern California Association of Governments. With that increase comes projected increases in urban water use, an increase of approximately 45%. And as the board knows, Coachella Valley Water District and the region has been panning for growth, but also for sustainability of our groundwater basin for many years. Through its water management plans, which are now the SIGMA Alternative Plan, while the urban water management plan focuses on urban demands, those served directly by CVWD, those urban water management plans, pardon me, those water management plans do take into consideration all water use from all sectors, including agriculture, golf, industrial, et cetera. But the urban water management plan is specifically focused on the urban demands. So looking at those projected demands in water supply, that analysis shows that we are able to meet those projected demands with available water supplies. So what are those water supplies? Will they include our local groundwater and surface water, imported water from both the Colorado River, as well as state water project water exchange for Colorado River water, and along with the recycled water projects that CVWD has? And regionally, that also includes Desert Water Agency, as well as some projects that are planned by India Water Authority. Projected demands are shown here. Our current demands are just shy of 100,000 acre feet per year and are projected to increase to just over 148,000 acre feet per year by 2045. As I noted, the 2020 demands include our current service area. Those for 2025 and beyond do capture the full service area because of, you know, we wanted to make sure that we're planning for potential consolidations, as well as connections that might not currently be served by CVWD. CVWD's direct source of urban water supply is groundwater, and the India sub-basin and Mission Creek water management plans, aka the SIGMA Alternative Plans, which are currently being updated, ensure that there's an adequate and sustainable source of groundwater supply. So the analysis shows that supplies are reliable for normal year, single dry year, and multiple dry years. One of the requirements of the urban water management plan is to report on water use reductions that were required under Senate Bill X7-7, which requires each agency to reduce its per capita use by 20% from its baseline by the year 2020. CVWD achieved this target in reduction in gallons per capita per day, or GPCD, exceeding its compliance target for 2020.
Zoe, is that baseline year, what year, what is that? Is it 2013?
No, the, the base, that baseline period is 2010? Yeah, it's, yeah, there's a couple ways to, my apologies, there's a couple ways, there's a couple of different ways to do it, and we decided to go with the 10-year average.
Okay.
And so 2020 target was 412, and we've actually achieved a GPCD of 331, and that represents a 35.7 reduction. So the other requirement of the plan is to adopt a Water Shortage Contingency Plan. The legislation requires that urban water suppliers prepare a Water Shortage Contingency Plan. In the six agencies that participated in the original plan coordinated their efforts. Each agency's Water Shortage Contingency Plan has some differences just to match the specific needs of the service area. So the Water Shortage Contingency Plan allows us to proactively identify potential supply shortages, communicate water conservation requirements to customers, to take action to reduce demands, as well as enforce those conservation requirements. There's a variety of things that could result in a shortage, and we've listed a few here. It's everything from longer, more severe drought under climate change, a natural disaster that disrupts local or statewide supplies, power outages, et cetera. So those are the type of events that the plan, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, is intended to address. So a couple of different elements to Water Shortage Contingency Plans. First of all, they include shortage levels. There are six shortage levels, as well as identifying actions that would be taken at each level. Those actions include demand reduction, supply enhancement, operational changes, as well as use prohibitions. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan also identify how agencies will communicate this information and the enforcement and penalties. This next slide shows some actions for shortage level one through six. This is not comprehensive, it's just meant to illustrate the process. And I'll use shortage level number three as an example. Shortage level three would represent 30% shortage, which is described as moderately limited water supplies. And an example of a selected action under that level would be outdoor water use allowed three days per week. The water, the draft Water Shortage Contingency Plan was presented to the board on May 25, and we have taken the input provided by the board and made changes to the CVWD Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And where possible, we collaborated with the other agencies to align on those changes as well.
So if you could go back, please.
Go ahead.
So, so what triggers the declaration of the shortage level?
I'm, I'm going to cover that in the next slide.
Oh, okay.
Could I, could we stay here just one more second?
Absolutely.
You know, I saw it when I was reviewing this, and I know this is just the presentation part, but this, I know this is the urban water management plan, so it doesn't cover golf courses on non-potable, but, but you talk a little bit about, like, on number five, grass at parks and schools to be watered with recycled water or not at all. And then six goes to no outdoor watering. I mean, wouldn't recycled water still be allowed? I just, I don't understand when that would never, ever not be allowed, you know what I mean? If, if they have access to it. And, because, because that doesn't put a demand on our aquifer. So, I don't know. It's, I don't understand that.
So let me, let me turn, just for a moment, to Katie. Katie took the lead on the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, so I want her to make sure that she addresses that clearly.
Yeah.
And as stated in the staff report, we do have, you know, we do have some opportunities today to provide input.
Right.
And even though, you know, to adopt this with any direction from the board. So let me give her an opportunity to clarify that point.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you recall, we did go through the elements of this plan on the 25th, on May 25th, and your comments were incorporated as changes. I think this is a good nuanced question here.
Yeah.
I think, you know, what the intention here for number five is, is that when we're talking about a park or a school that's not currently watered with recycled water, but we could get them recycled water in the event of a stage five emergency, then we could allow them to water. So the, the difficulties of that are high, but it's, it's intended to mean that if there were a possibility, and I'll give you an example, in Desert Water Agency's service area, there's a park that's near recycled water infrastructure, but not connected to recycled water infrastructure. So this stage five shortage might be the trigger that would then connect them to that supply. But without the availability of a non-potable supply, they would not be able to water. Again, you're, you're correct, in that these things are applicable only to urban water. So there are some exceptions in here where we say, where we explicitly say if you're on recycled water, it's okay, but truthfully, that's implied throughout because the, the plan itself is an urban water specific plan.
No, I get it. But then, then stage six goes to no outdoor watering, which if you've already figured out how to get that non-potable supply, why wouldn't you be allowed to keep it?
You would.
Okay.
You would. Yeah. And again, I understand why that's confusing, and maybe we can make some edits there, but essentially, this is only applicable to urban water, but we have written some things in there just to clarify. So for example, during the drought, the previous drought, we had a lot of customers asking questions about, you know, I live in a, in a country club that's not allowed to water, but the country club next to me is lush green. Why is that? And the answer was they were on a non-potable source. And so we did write into the language, unless you're on an unpotable source, so that it'd be easier for us to communicate that with customers.
Yeah.
But the truth is, when you get to number six, we're still only talking about urban water supplies.
So it's the same as five?
It's the same as five.
So, so then, I, I'm getting really picky on, I know, Zoe, I'm sorry, this is later.
This is what this is for.
But, I mean, what is daylight hours? What does that mean? I mean, is that twilight? What, you know?
So sunup to sundown, and the reason we didn't put specific times in there is because it, it will matter a great deal because of daylight savings times, what that time is during which time of the year.
So as soon as the sun goes over the mountain, you can't see the sun anymore.
Yeah, if you're in Lil Lica Cove, it might be different than Desert Hot Springs.
Yeah.
But the intention here, and, and I know we talked about this when I presented this in May, the intention is that this is a plan. So if we needed to implement stage two, we would come to you and say, we need to implement stage two. And if it's the dead of summer, you may say, okay, that, that stage two item, that no watering daylight, during daylight hours, we're going to make that seven to seven, or whatever the case may be. But it's, it's written relatively broadly for that opportunity to make changes because it's so different at different times of the year.
Yeah. And, and also, four, stage four, five, and six is, the likelihood of that is, is a catastrophe, like an earthquake, that, that may affect a portion of our wells in a certain area. So the likelihood that this scenario for four, five, and six would happen district-wide is, is unrealistic.
You know, if you would have asked me that in 2013, I would have said it will never happen. But now, having lived through a declared emergency, where the situation was that we were told we were in a stage four, despite the fact that CVWD itself was able to meet those demands, that's why it's so important that we do write this plan in a way that works for us. Because you're correct, that the likelihood of CVWD being unable to supply water, 40% of its water, to our entire customer base would require a catastrophe. But in 2014, there was a decision made that put us into that stage. And so that's why it's really critical that we do write those levels at, in a way that's acceptable to the board, in case we ever are in a position where we're required to enter a shortage despite our physical situation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. So this next slide goes to Director Aguilar's question. Starting in 2022, each agency will need to make an annual assessment of expected supplies and demands for the year, and make a decision whether to implement shortage levels. And the Water Shortage Contingency Plan includes a description of that decision-making process. So this is now an annual requirement. So early in the year, we'll be assessing, and we'll need to turn in our assessment and make a decision. Now, I, I think as Katie
works for us. Because you're correct, that the likelihood of CBWD being unable to supply water, forty percent of its water, to our entire customer base would require a catastrophe. But in 2014, there was a decision made that put us into that stage. And so, that's why it's really critical that we do write those levels in a way that's acceptable to the board, in case we ever are in a position where we're required to enter a shortage despite our physical situation.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, this next slide goes to Director Aguilar's question. Starting in 2022, each agency will need to make an annual assessment of expected supplies and demands for the year, and make a decision whether to implement shortage levels. And the water shortage contingency plan includes a description of that decision-making process. So, this is now an annual requirement. So, early in the year, we'll be assessing, and we'll need to turn in our assessment and make a decision. Now, I, I think as Katie alluded to, there are other situations where, outside of that process, that decision might be mandated. But as regular course of business, this is something that will now be required to assess on an annual basis. And if we are ever in a situation, either through the assessment, which, as Director Bianco noted, is not very likely, or through a mandate, we want all of the agencies in the valley to coordinate their actions, their communication, as well as with Department of Water Resources and Metropolitan Met, in preparing the assessment on an annual basis, but also in terms of communication locally between the agencies. In the first assessment, we'll need to turn to the Department of Water Resources by July 1 of 2022. Does that address your question, or did you have?
Well, no, it's, thank you, it's, it's helpful. It's just that this, this plan is really outside of any kind of state declaration.
If, if there was a state declaration, we would be using the plan to guide our actions. So, it, it serves both a purpose if we have a declaration due to a local situation, as well as a state declaration. And I'll let Katie speak a little bit more about that.
I think maybe what you're getting at, and I'm sorry if I'm guessing, but I think that, that we're in a drought situation right now in California. And so, I think what you're asking is, would this be effective if that declaration were made? So, in, you know, in this situation this year, it is certainly possible that if there was a declaration of a statewide drought, and we were required to implement, that we would bring this plan forward and ask you to implement. But on a normal, ongoing basis, it will be an annual assessment, and then we will respond to the state and say, we have the supplies to meet our demands, we're not in a shortage, we won't be implementing any of these stages. Conversely, you know, if we turn this in on July 1st, and then, heaven forbid, August 1st, we have a massive earthquake, we would implement this plan outside of that separately. So, it allows for both. On an annual basis, we'll be submitting to meet a state mandate, but in the event that an emergency happened, or an emergency is declared, this assessment may not be what's happened. What instead would happen is, we would go to those triggers through the shortage plan and start implementing those actions.
Yeah, that helps. I think that's the point. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, finally, one last requirement of the urban water management plan this year for those agencies relying on State Water Project was to prepare a regional analysis to demonstrate that the region is, one, increasing the reliance on local supply, and number two, reducing the reliance on water imported through the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta. While this is not specifically a requirement of the Urban Water Management Planning Act, the Delta Reform Act of 2009 says that if a future project is proposed in the Delta, such as, for example, the Delta Canvans facility, the proposer will need to show the agencies who receive the water are taking steps to increase their local self-reliance and reduce their reliance on the Delta. So, not a requirement of the Urban Water Management Plan, but something that State Water Project contractors need to do. And DWR incorporated that into the Urban Water Management Plan with the recommendation that that be included as part of the Urban Water Management Plan. It is, the analysis is included in the 2020 Regional Urban Water Management Plan, but we also have to incorporate it by amendment into the 2015 plan. It does cover increased reliance on local supplies, and one of those is recycled water. And as shown in the plan, we're currently using about 9,000 acre feet of recycled water, with plans to increase that up to 16,000 based on planned projects. That could go even higher. We currently have a change petition for our water reclamation plan four. And if that is successful, then we, you know, could pursue, would pursue additional recycled water there. So, the next steps, after the presentation, there will be a public hearing to receive public input, and then we will be asking the board to adopt by resolution the 2020 Coachella Valley Regional Urban Water Management Plan, the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and Appendix L as an addendum to the 2015 plan. Following adoption, and as directed by the board, we can, will be going over the public input and, you know, making necessary tweaks to the plan. And then, we will be submitting it to the Department of Water Resources by the required deadline of July 1. We will also be filing a sequoia notice of extension pursuant to State Water Code Section 10652.
Okay. Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, I wanted to make sure that any board members that do have questions have an opportunity to ask of staff while they're here.
Mr. President, I just would like to make for the record, Director Estrada joined us at 8:35.
Oh, thank you. I think I heard, very quietly heard somebody talking there.
Hey, John, yeah, thanks for the opportunity. We reviewed it last time, had a lot of comments. It looks like a great document.
Thank you. And Vice President Estrada, at least, I want to make sure I can hear you, I haven't heard you yet.
Yeah, I'm here. I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I hear you loud and clear. Thank you. What happened to him? All right, so why don't we open the, open the public hearing then? At this time and place, this is the time and place fixed for the public hearing on the 2020 Coachella Valley Regional Urban Water Management Plan, Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and Appendix L of the 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. Clerk Bermudas, have we completed proper notification of this public hearing?
Yes, Mr. President, we have, in accordance with the applicable law, including Water Code Section 10642 and Government Code Section 6066. A notice of the public hearing was published within the jurisdiction of the district on June 4th, 2021, and June 11th, 2021. Written notice of availability for review of these documents and of this public hearing also were provided to the cities, counties, and tribes of the Coachella Valley.
Thank you. And then, legal counsel, please help us understand the purpose of today's hearing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And in accordance with the, the, with the law, including but not limited to, to Water Code Section 10642, a public hearing is being held in order to provide members of the public and other interested entities with the opportunity to be heard in connection with the proposed adoption of the 2020 Regional Urban Water Management Plan, Water Shortage Contingency Plan, and Appendix L to, to the 2015 plan. And following the public hearing, the Board of Directors will consider adoption of these documents as amended by changes, if any, incorporated by the Board of Directors as a result of the input received today at the public hearing.
Thank you. I declare, I hereby declare the public hearing open, and will request that those wishing to speak via Zoom, please give your name and limit your comments to three minutes. We will now hear from anyone who wishes to come forward and speak, and Clerk Bermudas, why don't you call, call them out?
We do have six speakers, and the first one will be Alina. I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak, Ms. Alina, and we should see her in a few seconds.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We can hear you, Ms. Alina, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much. To the board for listening to us, I have sent to Ms. Bermudas the copy of the presentation that you all received. I'm also going to have one of my colleagues, Anna, because there's no way I can get this down to three minutes. My first part of my comment is directed to all of you, but in particular, to Director Bianco. The Colorado River is in crisis, and that supplies our aquifer. The latest projections show that Lake Mead will decline below the threshold of 1075, which is when the federal government declares a shortage. Because of climate change and hotter temperatures, the water that is evaporating off the landscape, leaving less flowing to the river and its tributaries, scientists say this is a mega drought, and one, unlike the long droughts of the past, is amplified by carbon pollution and the heating of the planet. So, what next, happens next? If the reservoir drops below 1,045 feet, then California would start to take cuts from the Colorado River. If the reservoir is going to go below 1,025 feet, the total cuts will be more than 1.3 million acre feet for California and the, its neighboring states. So, the three states of Mexico, well, a country, Mexico, and California. So, this is a real crisis. This is something that is, needs to be factored into this, because if we lose the aquifer supply, and we're going to start losing it, there is no question that this is going to cause a significant issue for the valley. You know, the Coachella Valley is already in overdraft, and we have three surfing parks and one swimming lagoon that are not accurately being supported in the urban water demands. It needs to use drinking water, it needs to use our aquifer water, it can't use recycled water, so it really needs to be placed in the urban water demands. There's no contingency plan that is put in place for these massive surfing parks and lagoons that are going to be taking our water. That has to be in any type of plan. And I'll talk to you in a second about how much water they're, they're taking. These four water features, let me talk to you about them. Coral Mountain Resort in La Quinta, 16.7 acres, 18 million gallons to fill. It's only listed as 119 acre feet of total demand per year. The Crystal Lagoon, the most, the worst, is 34 acres, 62.8 million gallons to fill. And they say there's only going to be 4 acre feet a year of total water demand on that. The evaporation on these things is huge. You'll see the other two. Thermal is 20.6 acres, filled with 20 million gallons of our drinking water.
And, and if I may, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but the three minutes has expired. All the board members do have a copy, hard copy of your presentation. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, yeah, I just located it. Thank you very much. All right.
And so, our next speaker is, and I, I hope I pronounce this correctly, it's, is it Anast? Anast? And so, I will go ahead and give you speaking access.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to continue on after my colleague Alana's comments. I'm a civil engineer, I've done some calculations on my own, although I'm not a hydrologist. I've taken some simple, basic calculations, and I've determined that the amount of water that is being estimated as being a demand for these water facilities seems to be very low. And particularly hard to understand how one particular area, or one particular resort, say the Coral Mountain Resort, which is only 16.7 acres in set, in, in area, requires 119 acre feet per year of total water demand, whereas the Crystal Lagoon in Rancho Mirage is bigger in area, almost double in size, more than double in size, yet the water demand is one quarter of what the Rancho, or the, the La Quinta Resort is. I, I'm, I'm having difficulty coming to some kind of understanding as to how these water demands can be so low, when what we have found in our calculations is that the water demand is going to be significantly higher. In, in very simple terms, we're, we're looking at potentially as many as 3,000 acre feet per year are going to be used and wasted by these features. And one thing I did not hear today in the presentation earlier with respect to the drought emergency planning, is all of the citizens will be required to stop watering or reduce their water consumption significantly. What, what do these five water resorts in the valley do? Will they be able to continue to, to use the water? And is it a situation where, as we as residents, are subsidizing the operation of these large commercial facilities? It, in Ms. Colamonas's presentation that you've got a copy of, it's very clear that the water consumption is going to be huge. These, not all of these resorts are something that the average citizen of the valley will be able to come and use and enjoy with their family. For example, the one in La Quinta, it's going to be a private resort. So, the residents of La Quinta, by paying, or the residents of the Coachella Valley, by paying more money for their, their personal consumption, will be, in effect, subsidizing these commercial operations as they're going. I think that this is an unfair treatment of the, of the residential customers. I think as the district is the steward of our water resources, I would respectfully suggest that you reevaluate the priorities with the consumption of these large commercial, five large commercial developments in the Coachella Valley. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
The next speaker will be Gary Burns. And let me find Mr. Gary. Okay, Mr. Burns, can you hear me?
Good. I should be, you should be able to hear me now, right?
Okay. Yes, we do. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity to speak. The presentation answered most of my questions, but I, I just have a few, if you don't mind. I don't know whether to just ask all the questions or just one at a time, but I would like to know where the Aboriginal or tribe lawsuit fits into this? And, and if they decide to take over most of the water resources, then, and how does that affect the emergency plan? That's one question. And then, the second one is, who actually declares the state of emergency? Is that the board, the state, or the, or the, or the water district? And, and third question is, what is the actual availability of recycled water? Is there lots of it available, and, and the only restriction is getting additional pipelines? And the last one, I always ask is, what are the roadblocks to you meeting your goals? Do you see any? That's it for me. Sylvia?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. And our next speaker will be Gwen. Let me...
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So, my name is Gwen Atherton, and I am speaking on behalf of Coachella Valley Waterkeeper. Waterkeeper believes these plans are vital to protecting our water resources, and we appreciate your consideration of our comments. We understand that these documents must be submitted to the state by July 1st, but we believe our comments warrant modification. Waterkeeper is concerned that the plan does not adequately address climate change concerns, nor does it include drought preparedness strategies that consider the possibility of severe water shortages. The plan uses a 5% state water project allocation as the worst-case scenario, despite the state water project allocation dropping to 0% in 2014. The plan considers the 2014 dry year unusual. However, Section 3.6 of the plan states that the region will experience more severe and frequent drought than in the past. Multiple tables note that in dry periods, regional water agencies could collaborate to produce additional groundwater, but does not list how or to what extent the agencies could produce this additional supply. The plan does not appropriately detail plans for optimizing the use of recycled water. California Water Code requires urban water suppliers to create a plan for increasing the use of recycled water. While the plan does describe current and past uses of recycled water, it does not specifically contemplate plans for expansion. Additionally, the 2020 actual use of recycled water fell short of the 2015 projections, and the 2015 actual use fell short of the 2010 projections. The plan does not address the reasons for these shortfalls, or any plans to ensure that future recycled water use meets or exceeds the current projections. While the plan lists incentives designed to increase recycled water While the plan lists incentives designed to increase recycled water use, these incentives have not been improved upon from the 2015 plan in which they were unsuccessful. Finally, the plan does not discuss demand reduction actions for commercial water parks. The use of these facilities is likely to increase with more of such parks under consideration. Given the high water use of such facilities, the plan should be in place to manage water for these users during instances of drought. Again, we thank you for your work and kindly ask that the board consider resolving these issues before submitting to the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next person is, I hope I pronounce this correctly, Jerome?
Yes, good morning.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Jerome Olthoff. I work for Water Systems Consulting. So I was part of the team that worked with the district staff and the other participating agencies to put the report together. So I appreciate the opportunity to be part of the discussion. I don't have any specific comments right now.
Okay, thank you so much. And our next speaker will be Omar. Let's see, Omar, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, perfect. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Good morning. Well, thank you. Good morning. My name's Omar Gasol and calling on behalf of Leadership Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments this morning. We would like to raise some concerns in regards to the draft regional urban water management plan and draft water shortage contingency plan. First, while we commend CVWD and other regional members on thinking critically about how to conduct public outreach in the midst of a pandemic, we are concerned that public outreach efforts may not have reached some of the most vulnerable communities in the region, disadvantaged communities in the eastern Coachella Valley. Many of the outreach efforts that relied heavily on technology. The eastern Coachella Valley has very limited broadband infrastructure and residents struggle with access to technology. To ensure these plans reflect these communities' concerns, we suggest CVWD conduct in-person outreach in the eastern Coachella Valley. Second, while CVWD has active consolidation projects in the eastern Coachella Valley, it is unclear how these water supply needs and those of communities who would like to consolidate were taken into consideration in the water supply analysis presented. Given the widespread need for water infrastructure in the eastern Coachella Valley, CVWD should consider the water supply needs of these communities and actively incorporate consolidation of these communities in their short and long-term water management plans. Last, it is widely known the eastern Coachella Valley is plagued by unsafe groundwater quality. Groundwater quality can often further degrade during drought when groundwater levels drop. To protect residents dependent on groundwater during drought, we ask CVWD to consider developing an emergency consolidation plan for communities whose groundwater quality is degrading during drought. For additional information on our concerns, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have another attendee that joined. I don't have a name. I'm trying to find out if they're interested. So I just see you listed as LCIA ECV Office. Are you interested in speaking in the public hearing?
Hi, no, I'm actually just calling in to listen, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and mute you.
All right, thank you.
So we have no additional speakers at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and we have quite a bit of it in written form We've already received this written communication, right? So we have that.
It is. Our script is, I just realized that the written portion of the communications is after. The public speakers will have to look at it.
They went together.
Correct.
So we have those.
So we do. We have a copy of Ms. Elena's as well as three additional letters that have been added to the record and distributed to the board. You should all have caught four different written communications in regards to this item.
All right, so I am prepared to close the public hearing. However, before I do that, I would like to provide an opportunity for anyone else wishing to provide public input to do so. Is there anyone else wishing to speak today? Need to be patient with the Zoom thing. I think we're good. All right, so I hereby declare the public hearing closed. I know we had a number of comments and questions and we may have board members wishing to address those or to ask about those. Personally, I don't know that I do, but do we have any questions by board members? Why don't we go on the remote? Vice President Estrada?
No, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Director Nelson?
Only John, that, I mean, the public comments today, I mean, just really reflect a, you know, great knowledge of what's going on in the valley, great concern about the drought that we're in now, both in the Sierras and in the Colorado. And these are all issues that are ongoing issues that we take very seriously and put a lot of effort into. The plan is a good plan and, you know, we've managed through the state's declaration of cuts in there and now we have a little more, well, we have a lot more discretion as to, you know, how we go about addressing the local needs with the local reality. Certainly, the Colorado is of great concern to the valley. Our current water rights on the Colorado are firm and secure and, you know, as we look to work cooperatively and collaboratively with the other basin states, you know, California has a 4.4 million acre foot secured right there that is priority over some of the other states. And, you know, we plan on, you know, working through the drought contingency plan as it comes about, working with the Colorado River Simulation Study, looking at demand management and supply. So there's a lot of work going on in this realm and we will continue to adapt to a ever-changing environment. And this is just a step and not, not a, you know, it's a document, but it's a step in the process of using adaptive management in a changing world. So I appreciate all those comments and look forward to adopting the plan.
Thank you. Other board members?
I just have a, first of all, thank you, great work on this plan. But the governor in May, I think it was, issued a shortage declaration for several counties, 30-plus counties. We were not listed in that declaration. Why is that?
That's a great question and thank you for that. So as you know, in 2014, it was declared as a statewide emergency and this year the state has taken a really different approach to that. Coincidentally, I happen to have had a phone call yesterday with Joaquin Escobal, who's the chairman of the State Water Resists Control Board on another topic. And he said that the county-by-county approach is really related to sort of the needs of those counties. And in some places, there are situations where, for example, they really need to relax a regulatory requirement that it would allow for a water trade, or they need to have the emergency declaration in place to seek funding for a drought response action. So they are working with the counties specifically on what their needs are and how those are addressed. And it really depends on how that county is being impacted by the shortage. I don't think that means that we won't see a statewide shortage. I do think that that's a possibility in the future if things continue. But I think that the approach this time has been based more on the need for that declaration than it has been on a statewide assessment. One of the things that I, you know, I think CBWD deserves a lot of credit for during the last drought is that we were coalition with several other water agencies that went to the state board and specifically asked that drought declarations involve a supply and demand assessment, which is what you see here in this plan now. Because one of the things that happened with the statewide declaration was that some communities who had plenty of water were under more restrictive regulations than those who didn't. So you had communities where their state requirement was very minimal, but they had no water. And so this supply and demand assessment was really an attempt to improve that so that the regulations really met the needs of the county. So we did turn that in. We have continued to assess supply and demand on an annual basis and now it will be a formal part of this plan. And I think that when, well, if there appears to be a statewide declaration, that we would once again proceed to the state with our assessment to demonstrate to them what we need. And I, you know, I think these things are sometimes decisions that are made by policymakers. I know they are sometimes decisions made by policymakers. And in this instance, it appears that those decisions are really based on the needs of those counties. So, you know, we could end up in another statewide situation. That's certainly possible if things continue, but at this time, they are basing those declarations on the needs of the counties.
Great, thank you.
I just want to say that, you know, I've seen these plans before. I have a lot of confidence in Zoe. I think that she's very conservative by nature. For instance, the projected urban water demands and supplies for CBWD looking out until 2045, I think that those numbers are worst-case scenarios. That's a full-out building and a lot of people moving here to the desert, which may happen or may not. The likelihood of that happening is, I think, is very low. So I think that this is very conservative by nature. And so that this plan is put together to absolutely meet these numbers and not be right on the line. That's the way I look at things. I think that we've always done that here at CBWD. We've always looked to the future for growth. If it happens, great, we're prepared. But if it doesn't, we have these water supplies and we're looking out to the future. We've been looking out for the future of the water here in the Coachella Valley for over 100 years and we continue, we're going to continue to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I do appreciate the effort that went into this. You know, and just to say too, I mean, this is a regulatory requirement. We already have our water management plan, which is a more comprehensive look at the various sources and uses in the valley. So this is specific and it's really a subset of that other plan. And, you know, some of the concerns I'm hearing really relate to a more global look at our water, which is probably more completely addressed in that other plan. Yeah.
President Powell, if I may add, particularly for the public, we do have water management plans that look at water use across all sectors. And under Sigma, we're required to do a climate change analysis and we are looking at how to address a range of uncertainties. And so I invite the public to our public workshop on June 24th. So just a couple of days from today, we'll have our next public workshop on the Indio Sub Basin Alternative Plan update.
I'm sorry, the date on that again?
June 24th.
June 24th. Two days.
Two days from now.
And Zoe, is there a link on our website if folks wanted to join that to explain how they were able to get into that Zoom meeting?
So we have a stakeholder list for that meeting. We have both information on our website as well as in the regional Indio Sub Basin Sigma website. We have sent out announcements a couple of times, but for anyone on the line who needs additional information, participation in this meeting provided my email and they can certainly reach out to me and I can forward them the invite.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this board, at this time, the board is asked to consider the adoption by resolution of three things. One is the 2020 Coachella Valley Regional Urban Water Management Plan. Two is the district's water shortage contingency plan. And three is Appendix L as an amendment, as an addendum to the district's 2015 Urban Water Management Plan.
And Mr. President, we would, it is required that we have all three resolutions adopted through separate motions. So, you know, our recommendation is to take -19 and then -20 and -21.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion to adopt the 2020 Coachella Valley Regional Urban Water Management Plan? And that's a...
Resolution 21, 2021-19.
2021-19. I'll make a motion. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on that. And roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Thank you. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, here we go. And then, what's the resolution number on the?
2021-20.
That's what I thought. I didn't want to guess. What I'm looking at, it's buried in this thing. I didn't want to click on it. So then, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-20, which is the district's water shortage contingency plan?
I'll move the resolution. Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, also then, we're looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-21, which is Appendix L as an addendum to our 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. I'll make a motion.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second on that. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Aguilar? I'm sorry, Director Bianco?
Aye.
I was testing you. Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so all three resolutions are adopted. And I believe it's clear in there, this is also to authorize staff to submit copies of these documents to California Department of Water Resources by July 1, 2021.
That's included in each particular resolution, yes.
And file a notice of exemption with Riverside County, Imperial County, San Diego County clerks within five working days of adoption of these resolutions. But thank you. Thank you very much, Zoe and Katie, and to all of our participants. It's all good information. Good feedback. Let's see, written communications, I know we had four of them that were listed in the board packet and are available on our website. Thank you. 11A, these are our action items for today. This one is to, and so we're going to ask Directors Nelson and Bianco to leave the meeting.
And just for the record, as was done over two years ago, the board, because of the property interest of three of the five board members in their requirement to have a quorum to take action, recused three board members and then went through the process to requalify President Powell. And so the board members who consider this matter are Directors Aguilar, Estrada, and President Powell.
Okay, thank you. All right, David, go ahead.
All right, good morning.
Morning.
The purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute a budget amendment for the Oasis Inlu Recharge Project in the amount of $3 million. As you know, the project was awarded to Suda Construction for construction on November 3, 2020 in the amount of $46,88,353.70. The current fiscal budget was developed in anticipation that about $8 million would be spent for construction this fiscal year. However, the pace of the work has exceeded our expectations and we're asking for $3 million here to keep the project moving forward. There will be no adverse impact to the budget. This amendment will be performed in combination with a reduction in the future FY23 budget. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Is there a motion to approve item 11A?
I'll make a motion to approve item 11A.
I'm guessing Vice President Estrada's still on the line, right?
Yes, sure, yes.
Could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Just make sure you're there. So we have a motion, a second, to approve item 11A. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, he's, I think Director Nelson's leaving the meeting, has left the meeting.
Well, I had to get him out, and then now he's...
He's got something else.
Yeah, I don't know how long he's been there.
Yeah, I think he's not coming back. All right, I spoke too soon. All right, so we still have Director Estrada on the line. Director Nelson has left the meeting. So we carry on. 11B. David, go ahead.
All right, hello again. The purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District to facilitate the certification of the existing levees within the Whitewater River Stormwater Channel between Vista Chino and Ramone Road, and to authorize a 50% cost share in reimbursement to RCFC in the amount of $35,628.50. As you know, we have a handful of levees throughout the valley that we know provide a physical obstruction from flow. However, they are not seen by FEMA as complying with their standards for flood protection. And so this is an effort here, given that Riverside County manages the maintenance of about 200 feet width here on the western banks, along with, and CBWD manages or operates and maintains the easterly half of that. And so this is an effort to make sure we're both in line when we submit to FEMA to get a CLOMAR and certify these levees and allow for the folks within the region to forego the need to obtain flood insurance. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve 11B?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Motion by Estrada, second by Aguilar. Any other discussion? I don't hear any. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Nelson, Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that passed 4-0. And your last one, David, is 11C. Go ahead.
All right, this one is a request for an authorization to increase the general manager's sign-in authority from $75,000 to $150,000 for the hydraulic review of the CB Link project. The authorization coincides with deposits from the Coachella Valley Association of Governments for the plan review. As a result, there is no net cost to CBWD. When CBWD receives requests for projects in the area within that affect our facilities, we require that the project proponent provide a $10,000 minimum deposit for CBWD's time and for our consultant, Northwest Hydraulic Consultants, to review the technical aspects of the proposal. The geographic reach of this particular project, as you can see, is throughout the Coachella Valley, and they have 13 under crossings that have induced rather multiple reviews to date, which have cumulatively exceeded our general manager's sign-in authority. So the request herein is to allow an increase in that sign-in authority up to $150,000. There's no guarantee that we'll go that far, but this is just an effort to capture now, so that as we progress through the review, we don't hold up the review to get authority to spend the dollars.
Right, thank you. So is there a motion to approve 11C?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
And Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passed 4-0. Thanks, David. And then 11D, Jeffrey Keel. Go ahead.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. The item we have before you is a staff recommendation regarding the rescission of our RFP for Other Post-Employment Benefits, or OPEB, Trust Investment Advisory Services, and the execution of an amendment to the existing contract we have with PFM for said services. Back in March, we issued the RFP for Investment Advisory Services for OPEB Trust, and after we received the proposals, three out of four of the firms bidding raised questions regarding specific requirements relating to federal legal requirements regarding OPEB trusts. We engaged our attorneys with BB&amp;K, including their legal expert on OPEB trusts, to work with finance to review the trust documents and administration of structure. And after a thorough review, we came to the recommendation council and staff that we take this action to rescind the RFP and work with the existing firm, modify the agreement, and then that would give us time to thoroughly analyze how we're going to be managing that trust in the future. It could better prepare us if we come back for a future RFP process.
Was there anything, I mean, I guess my question is, what needs to change or what did change?
Well, there were a few things in the existing agreement that didn't work. There were certain services there that we weren't receiving, but we were paying for. There was indemnity language that was not in the district's benefit. And just interaction between the advisor and the trust, there were issues there. So there's a different trust manager, Wells Fargo. So we're looking at wrapping together a whole series of issues to deal with over the next year or so. But in the meantime, this amendment will fix the concerns in the existing agreement.
Okay.
I also like to mention that we have Jeff Chang from BB&amp;K. That's our OPEB experts on the line, excuse me, to answer any legal questions you may have.
Yeah, I just, you know, I guess my question is, maybe it's not a legal question, but it seems like we've found these problems with our existing agreement and possibly with our existing provider. And our solution to that is to give them an extension of their contract. It just seems like an odd thing to do.
Well, wasn't a problem with the provider. It's just that this agreement has been placed for five years. It was established five years ago. And at that time, they included elements of services in the agreement that I assume led to the pricing, that we never received any benefit from those services. So we have been happy with PFM's management of the trust. I think they've done a very good job with it. No qualms there. What prompted us to put out the RFP to begin with, was just following our standard practice of rebidding jobs every five years. And this expiration was coming up, and we just went ahead and prepared the RFP. And then after we got into this, looking at the legal matters and having discussions with Jeff Chang, he had some thoughts that, well, you could actually go further with how this is structured. We could work with your actuaries and have some collaborative efforts on how to more actively manage this trust. Does that help answer your questions?
Yeah, I would be disappointed if that's the assessment of them. So the fresh eyes of the other people that might be bidding on this were the ones that found the deficiencies on the existing?
Not the ones that were bidding on it.
They didn't provide...
They just, they had some concerns about accepting our existing professional services agreement language. That's what started us
Right.
peeling the onion and started saying, well, there's other opportunities to address here.
Okay. But it seems like the performance is okay. I'm not, that's what I generally look at.
The performance has been good.
Been good, yeah. All right, I'm all right with it.
Mr. President, I'll move item 11D. I'll second.
So we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
And for the record, Director Estrada has left the meeting as well.
Okay, so it's just the
So you technically don't have
Three mice at the dice. Just us.
You don't have to do roll call?
All in favor, say aye.
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 3-0, with two absent. Thanks, Jeff. All right. So board member general comments, why don't we start with Director Aguilar?
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay.
No comments.
No. Not particularly either. Just to say, it is dry out there. It, I mean, it, you know, projecting, it's not easy. Because you're trying to predict what's going to happen in the future, and nobody really knows the answer to that. But it is really dry throughout the West. That's hard to believe. Meetings, June, let's see, that's not going to work. We're going to skip the first two. June 10, Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, Director Bianco.
We did an overview of our fiscal year 2021, '22, agency-wide program and funds budget. There was an acquisition of 42.3 acres in the city of Palm Springs. And then we had a contract with Riverside County, UCR, excuse me, University of California Riverside, for conservation biology for the next year.
Good. Listed on the agenda is this June 10 DBBA board meeting. I will change that up a little. I don't think I was present at that, but I was present at the June 17 Member Appreciation Event that they put on at the Palm Springs Air Museum. And fairly good turnout, in person, real people and everything. And good opportunity for networking. And so I was there and got to see a lot of people. They were well represented by Mission Springs Water District at that event. So got to chat with a number of those guys. Anyways, June 10, the, wait a minute, June 11, discussion with general manager regarding Durerville, Director Aguilar.
That was simply a briefing with our general manager regarding my experience with Durerville and relocation of families and its history.
Yeah. Yep. Good. And then June 15, we had a special board meeting that was, attendance was noted at that meeting. June 21, meeting that was yesterday with staff regarding agricultural growth in the valley, and Director Nelson and I were both on that Zoom. And, you know, really trying to get a sense of what kind of water demand difference there will be placed by agriculture over the next 25 years. And again, difficult to say. A lot of, actually, your bill could make a difference on that, you know? I mean, something's going to have to change to keep things at the current level, in my opinion, you know, either legislatively or some other way. But so anyways, we did that. We essentially affirmed the numbers that the district had. I thought they were pretty good. Other meetings? Any other meetings?
President, I had a meeting on June 18 with the board of Woodhaven Country Club and the superintendent. We're in the process of hooking up recycled water to Woodhaven Country Club, and the board has had a turnover. So there's new people there, new superintendent, and so a different way of thinking. They were concerned about ripping up their fairway to hook up the non-potable water during the high season. And so staff has met all their concerns, and I think made everybody happy. So we're good.
Thanks for doing that. Any others? All right. Is there a motion approved per DM for the meetings reported on?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 3-0. General manager report?
Just an update on COVID. We have adopted new rules here. We have yet to open the facilities to the public. We're taking another look at that. It's possible that our next board meeting will be open to the public. I just got to make sure we check with staff, see how we feel about that. As far as numbers, we've had 92 recovered positive cases since last March. We have zero positives, zero direct contact, zero indirect contact, zero off work right now. We've had two cases for the month of June, zero cases for the month of May. We are coordinating or reviewing the Kalosha information that was recently provided with regard to workplace conditions. For the most part, we have allowed vaccinated employees to remove their mask, and have asked folks that are not yet vaccinated to continue wearing their masks in the workplace. And that's all I've got now, sir.
Thank you. Counsel report?
Yes, just for a brief briefing, Mr. President, on the issue of the COVID changes. In regard to public meetings, the Brown Act waivers do remain in place until September 30 in order to provide time for either the public agencies to make a change and/or for state law to change in regard to the use of virtual meetings. So until September 30, these waivers are still in place. Three bills that are making their way through Sacramento right now deal with different levels of potentially allowing for virtual meetings. One bill, AB 703, would provide an option for a public agency to have a virtual meeting through Zoom or online or on the phone, as long as a quorum of the board is present in the jurisdiction. AB 361 would only allow for the declared emergencies or emergency actions, if those are in place, to allow virtual meetings. And then AB 339 would only apply it as cities and counties. That bill would mandate virtual technology opportunities. So nothing has been passed yet. This board has a lot of flexibility, and as you just heard from your general manager, that's being implemented. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any departmental reports? Nope. So at this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider the items on the agenda 14A, B, and C. We will reconvene here and report out on closed session. Good. All right. So regular meeting is hereby reconvened. We do have reportable actions, and Attorney Ferre is going to report on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The board made a closed session on item 14A in regard to a protest letter received June 1 from Randall Roberts on a motion by Director Bianco, second by Director Aguilar. In a vote of 3 to 0, the board took action to direct special counsel to prepare a rejection letter from the district for the comment letter, thereby rejecting any claim on the merits to the extent the letter is intended to constitute a claim. In regard to a letter on the other part of the claim, we have regard to a letter received June 7, 2021, Director Bianco, Aguilar, motion and second, a vote of 3 to 0. The board took action to direct special counsel to prepare a rejection letter from the district for the comment letter, thereby rejecting any claim on the merits to the extent the letter is intended to constitute a claim. There was no reportable action on items B or C.
Thank you. And that concludes our business for today. And with no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.